Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order, the Planning Commission meeting to order for February 18th, 2020. If you could, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mr. Bentley, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Provozzano?
Here.
Mr. Shuto?
Here.
Mr. Hardy?
Here.
And I'm here. And, Mr. Tuckfield?
Present.
Okay.
Okay.
All present. We have a quorum. Approval of the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, if there's no comments or corrections by any other members, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for the February 4th, 2020 meeting as read.
Support. Okay. All right, approval of tonight's agenda.
Mr. Chairman, if you want to do a vote on that one?
Did I miss something?
Yeah, we got the motion in the second, but I don't think we voted on it.
I'm sorry?
On the minutes. I think we got the motion in the second, but we didn't vote on it.
Oh, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, I got it now. Approval of the agenda for tonight?
Mr. Chairman, if no deletions, additions, or corrections, I make a motion, we accept the agenda as read.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Provozano? All in favor?
Aye.
Approves. All right, number six, new business, ground sign one, Buckingham Village subdivision number two, permanent parcel 08-22-130-005, located on the south side of 23 Mile, east of Heinrich Road, section 22, Signs &amp; More petitioners. Are Signs &amp; More in the audience?
Yes.
Would you come up to the table, please?
Here.
Yep, right there, it's fine. State your name and your address.
My name, good evening, my name is Molly Smith, and I represent Signs &amp; More, 1371 Suter Drive, Troy, Michigan. And we are here on behalf of the Homeowners Association for Buckingham Village Two.
Okay. Mr. Skurdal, we'll start with you.
Yes, items on your agenda, the first two items, A and B, are almost identical. It's the same sign, it's just same size, everything just opposite sides of the street. We have gone through, and we did reviews on signs from public right-of-way, setbacks, heist, illumination, and sign area. We found, in terms of what we saw in terms of ordinance requirements, we found out the sign does meet the ordinance.
Okay.
There was some discussion earlier, there may be some questions on that. As a point of process, if there's any discussion on the signs, the process at this point is Planning Commission, if they decide to go ahead and approve the signs, it doesn't end there. We have to go through another zoning approval with the building department, make sure eyes are dotted and Ts are crossed in terms of all ordinance conditions.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Anything from the petitioner? You're just here to answer questions, right? Planning Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I had a number of questions just for the record. In reviewing the application for the sign approval, and after being onsite reviewing the location, you do have an existing sign. It indicates that you do not, and I just wondered what your intention is with the existing sign that is in the Boulevard Island?
It will be removed.
Okay. I was gonna say that according to our ordinance 20-5A1, it's just a maximum number of one per side, so I'm glad you're getting, or you're gonna be removing that when that happens. The other question I had, and maybe you know, but the question may go to our planner and our engineer, is there was nothing on the plans that were submitted as to whether or not there is a landscaped easement, 20-foot-deep landscaped easement along the front of your property. In accordance with the ordinance 20-5A2C and 3, if there is, your sign has to be in it. The plan does not indicate whether or not there is a landscaped portion there. When I look at it, when I go by it and stopped and reviewed it, it looks like there's certainly a landscaped strip there. I'm not sure where it is. On the plan, it's not identified.
I see.
And there is a 20-foot dimension that I can see there, but I'm not sure what that's for. It may be your landscaped area, it may not be. It looked from my site review that it was a lot further back, but it may in fact be that. It just doesn't show it, and so I didn't know whether or not you had a dedicated landscaped area. If you do, and the only reason I bring that up is it does change some of the requirements a little bit.
Okay.
So...
I don't know if there is a specific landscaped area that's set out for the subdivision. I did go out there and reconfirm the setback and where the sign will land, and there is a beautiful landscaped area in both sides, in which will be right directly behind the sign, where it lands, and we can certainly position it so it's in front. There are some large boulders in there, large trees, and there even seemed to be, on the one side, something that was mechanical, I don't know what it is, like an electrical box, that I would be hesitant of putting the sign inside of the landscape, but it is right, where it is being placed here is right outside of a very mature landscaped area on each side of the entrance there. So, you know, if I can, I'm not sure where I would need to go to find that plan. It must reside with the city, and is it something that I'd need to get my hands on and overlay it onto the document we have here that shows the sign placement with regard to right-of-way?
I would imagine the township does have record of it. Mr. Tifflin, would you have an idea as to who might have the drawings that would show if in fact there is a required landscape easement, or if it's just landscaped?
There is a 20-foot landscape common area in front of this development. Engineering, as well as planning, would have a copy of that drawing.
Okay. And is that the 20-foot that's identified?
Yes.
On this plan?
Yes.
Okay. All right. It does show your sign in that 20 feet, so if that's what it is...
Okay.
That's fine.
Is that, okay.
It just wasn't identified, so I couldn't react to it. The other is, there is a utility pole on the east side, and I'm not sure if your positioning here is within 10 foot of that utility pole. And that will probably be worked out in the details, but you might take a look at that, because the zoning ordinance has a 20-foot minimum clearance that you need from any utility pole, any electrical box, like you were talking, there's an electrical box there. It would have to be 10 foot away from that as well.
Okay. Okay, we will make sure that it is.
It also requires that if it is in that green belt, that it be a 15-foot setback from right-of-way, not 10 foot. And the maximum square foot of that sign, of each sign, I think, is 20, 20 square feet, which individually, you're fine, you're at 14-something, close to 15 anyway, so you should be okay there. I just wanted you to be aware of that. There is a clarification I need from our planning department, and that would be in section, in chapter 20-3, general requirements, general standards, for the area of signs. It identifies that if there are two faces of signs that are further than two foot apart, that the two faces constitute the total area. And so if your total area is 20 square foot or 24 square foot, you would divide that in half for each of your signs, is my understanding of that requirement, if it's in a landscaped area. So it does have a bit of an effect on your sign.
Okay.
I don't know if I've made myself clear, and it can be confirmed if I, that's my interpretation. That's how I see it.
So, right now, each, the sign area within each sign is just under 15 square feet per sign?
Yes.
It's like 14.9 square feet. So what you're saying is if I add up those two, and it's, you know, 29-point-something square feet?
Right.
Is that exceeding the 24 square feet?
That's correct.
So my limit is 24 square feet divided by two, which is 12 square feet of same area per sign?
That is correct, if it's not in a required green, or landscaped easement. If it is in a required landscaped easement, I think that gets reduced down to 20 square feet, but they'll correct me, I'm sure. So, if it's not in a required landscaped easement, you're back to 24 square feet, and you're right, each one would be 12 square feet.
But what you're saying, as far as the setback, rather than 10 feet away from the right-of-way, it needs to be 15 feet back?
If it's in that required landscaped easement.
Okay. So if it's 15 feet back, and I'm outside of the easement, then it can be 12 square feet per sign? Right?
Say.
If I go 15 feet back from the right-of-way, and I'm not in the restricted or the landscape area, then it can be 12 square feet. I could make a minor adjustment to the sign design to get it to 12 square feet.
Yes, yes, yes.
And I'm not sure if this is the appropriate place to ask, but is there a way that I could get a representative from a home township to meet me at the site, or to really define where this placement is, and look at what's there physically? Because I did see an electrical box, and there is a utility pole, and I want to make sure it makes sense to put the sign there to achieve what the homeowners want to achieve, and I'm sure it's just identification for people looking for their subdivision as they approach.
Mr. Skurdal, can you share with us your opinion on all of this? I want to make sure that Mr. Bentley's correct.
Yes, I'm gonna go, we, Mr. Bentley, there's a couple items I brought up that I am gonna check into.
Okay.
Difference between a typical ground sign in an easement and outside an easement. I will have to verify. I will personally be happy to meet with the sign representative onsite. I'll bring the restrictions with me and walk through everything while standing onsite.
I think that would be, that would be very helpful.
The last item I had, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry for this, regarding the setback, and we talked about it a bit, and I believe it'll be checked out, but just so you know, in the ordinance 20-3, which is for general requirements for signage, in A.3, the minimum setback for a road that has a right-of-way of 120-foot wide, which 23 does, and I did confirm that with the road commission today, their right-of-way department, that it will remain that even when it does get widened. So you're clear on that. But the chart in that ordinance indicates that for 120-foot right-of-way, it is a setback for a sign is 75 feet, not 70. 75 would represent 60 for, from the center line to the edge of right-of-way, plus 15 feet as setback. And if this landscaped easement is 20-foot wide, you've still got another five foot, you know, within that location to be still in the landscaped area, so you shouldn't be outside of it anyway.
Okay.
Okay. Very helpful. Any other commissioners?
Nope.
At this time, I'd like to open it to the public. Does anybody in the public have anything to say? Anyone? Okay. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I had a question for Mr. Skurdal on this. Mr. Bentley brought up a number of concerns here. I know there's two steps. Is this appropriate to take care of between this step and the next step, or would it be, would you feel better waiting on approval of the application until these are resolved?
I believe we can move forward. We do have another step with the building department before permits are even issued. They have a zoning person there that we work with to make sure everything is met, meets ordinance. You have the applicant in front of you, the applicant's agreed to everything you've asked for already. We'll double-check the ordinance onsite, so I think it is, in this case alone, I think it's worth to keep pushing forward.
So would it be appropriate to, if it was so moved to approve this application, to move it, understanding that the petitioner would pass all applicable ordinances per the review by departments as it went forward?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Send a motion to your...
I would be happy to make a motion, although I would like to check one more thing, and Mr. Skurdal may know this, I don't, because I haven't made a motion to assign ordinance for a while. Is this, do you know if this is a recommendation or a approval if I was to go forward with this? In other words, is it the Planning Commission's purview or the Board of Trustees' purview?
It's approval.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Skurdal. Thank you, Mr. Van Tifflin.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure, go ahead.
Because it says, it says the Planning Commission has to approve the design and placement. What is the material? I see an elevation, but I don't know what these materials are. I don't know if it's foam, or if it's covered, uncovered. I'm not sure what covers it, if it's a sheet metal, pre-finished. I really have no idea. It doesn't say on the drawing at all.
There, I do have additional documentation about the, how this is fabricated. Originally, the Homeowners Association was exploring the possibility of replacing the sign that was in the median, and with that, it was required to be breakaway. So we showed them some examples, and gave them information about a sign that is made of foam, and is coated with poly-armor coating, which is an acrylic acetate, so it's indestructible. So the foam is enclosed, and then it is, it, a process of master drywall painting, but it's in stucco, to make it look like anything. It can look like, so what we did from a design perspective is we recreated another sign that is in the back end, back area of the subdivision. There's an existing brick sign that we actually redesigned or recreated, so we're emulating that. So from the road, or walking by, it will look exactly like the brick slash limestone sign that they have existing. I'm not sure if that's in their subdivision, or...
Buckingham Village One.
It's Buckingham Village One, so we're matching that. But with this, this sign is, you're able to install it using breakaway posts. So you put, you dig holes into the ground that are 42 inches, you know, below the frost line, you set them in concrete, and they're breakaway poles. And so if it is hit by a car, it, there's minimal impact.
That is identified on here. I just, I didn't have any idea what the finish was, what this is gonna look like above ground.
So if you came up and you touched it, it's obviously not brick, but visually and aesthetically...
It'll look like it. Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Motion, anybody?
Mr. Chairman, if there is no further comments, I'd like to make a motion to approve the ground sign one for permanent parcel 08-22-130-005 pursuant to the recommendations of the department heads, and also contingent on the petitioner following any ordinances, applicable ordinances that are noted during the secondary review process.
Do I have a second?
Support.
Motion by Mr. Tuckfield, seconded by Mr. Shuto. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, well, we still have one more. We have the other side now. Ground, this is B, ground sign two, Buckingham Village subdivision number two, permanent parcel 08-22-130-005, located on the south side of 23 Mile, east of Heinrich, section 22, Signs &amp; More petitioner. I think we answered all the questions. Does anybody have anything else they want to share?
Or just say ditto.
Ditto, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I actually did have one question, and this was pertaining to something Mr. Bentley said. Mr. Skurdal, Mr. Bentley noted that there's required to be one sign per side. I guess I should be familiar with that portion of the ordinance. I'm not. Seeing this existing sign, I believe, is in the center median?
Yes.
If I'm correct. Does it have to be removed prior to a second sign putting in? Does it count as one per side? Should it be noted as part of the second sign approval?
That sign, we will require at the time of installation, we require demolition of that first sign before the next two signs are installed.
So that's more appropriate to be left with the zoning permit or the building permit that would come secondarily?
Yes, yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That was my only question.
Okay.
So just a comment, clarification, same comments and concerns for clarification, which will be handled by your applications for permit, correct?
Correct.
And those can be worked out then?
Okay.
Okay. I'll open it to the public. I think everybody's heard everything, but if anybody's got anything to say, come on up to the podium. Anybody? Okay. We'll turn it over to the commissioners. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, if there's no further comments or discussions, I'd like to make a motion to approve ground sign two for permanent parcel 08-22-130-005. This will be pursuant to recommendations by all appropriate department heads or consultants, and also under the condition that all appropriate zoning and building requirements are met in the second stage of the application.
Okay, motion by Mr. Tuckfield?
I'll support it again.
Supported by Mr. Shuto. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. All right, thank you very much, Myles.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next item, discussion regarding proposed text amendment to zoning ordinance for conditional rezonings. Mr. Skurdal?
Yes. The last couple months since we've been with the township, we've worked with Mr. Van Tifflin, we're finding, as the township urbanizes near the south end, we're getting a lot of straggler parcels, parcels that are uniquely shaped, uniquely located. They don't quite, they're prime for development, but they don't quite fit the zoning pattern of a general area of the township. Back in 2006, when the Michigan, the legislation passed a new zoning law, they recognized this was happening. And rather than trying to rezone an entire parcel, or use the planning and development option, which can be cumbersome at best for smaller parcels, they decided at that point to write in the legislation the ability for a township or a city to look at these unique parcels, and if there's any, and allow any type of design considerations to be brought forward to mitigate any negative effects on surrounding development, that you could either approve something like that, or else you can deny it. Now, the one, there's one little item I want to kind of discuss with you. It is illegal to what's called a contract zoning, as opposed to a conditional zoning. And there's a, in terms of process, and again, we can bring this up at another date once you get more familiar with this. In terms of process, if a commission or a board negotiates with an applicant, that's considered contract zoning, because you're offering an approval for someone giving you something, so constitutes a contract. Conditional rezoning is different in that a planning commission or a township board is not allowed to negotiate. The applicant must come forward with the conditions on how they want to mitigate any factors, could be traffic, could be lighting, it could be noise, it could be anything, but they gotta make the offer to you, and the commission and board only are allowed to either approve it as presented to you, or deny it as presented to you. You can postpone a decision if you want them to go back and let them figure out what the issues are based on what some of the discussion was. But that's the one difference between this new ordinance that got put in effect in 2006, and the, all the case studies for contract zoning has been in effect since 1921. In front of you, we put together, here's a couple documents. One that we have is a two-page discussion paper, kind of common questions, what goes into an application, what you can do and can't do. And when we give, on page two, three, and four, and five, we put together a sample ordinance for you to review. I could walk through that ordinance tonight, or if you prefer to go through and read it yourselves and come back and have a better feel for what the ordinance says. And in essence, the ordinance is going to allow you to put together the application, put together, in terms of the ordinance, what you want to see brought in front of you, in terms of an application, types of plans and things you want. You can put that together. It will also put in there, most important is a reverter clause. If, there's a certain, within a certain time limit, it's a year, I believe, in this sample ordinance, if the development does not happen within that certain time limit, even though you've conditionally rezoned it from, let's say, residential to a multiple-family, or residential to a commercial, if something doesn't happen within that year, that applicant either has to get a request for an extension in writing to this board, to this commission, or else the rezoning automatically reverts back to the previous zoning. So if it falls down, you're not zoning it for the next 10 or 20 years to a certain item if nothing happens. There's an automatic reverter clause in there to revert back to the, whatever the original zoning designation was. I could, like you say, if you like, I can walk through the entire ordinance right now with you, or else I could let you read it, and we can come back at a later date and look at it. And I'd leave it up to whatever this commission would like to do, I'm happy to do either.
I think we should probably read it, and then come back to them with our corrections or comments.
Comments, some questions.
I agree.
Yeah, many of us didn't see your email until later in the day.
Yeah, unfortunately. Unfortunately, I've got the attorney comments incorporated into these, so we waited till this morning till we got all the comments incorporated.
Okay.
So the attorney has taken a look at this.
Good. Yeah. So we can bring this back at the next...
Yes.
Planning commission meeting?
Yes, we can do that.
Okay. All right. Everybody agree? Are we good?
Yes.
All right. Old business, public comments on non-agenda items. Just a reminder that you have, uh, four minutes, so if there's anyone that has any business for the planning commission, please step up to the podium and go ahead. Yep, we'll take you to the podium over here. Please state your name and address.
Can we sit here?
Or you want us to bring a chair over?
Or if you want to, or if you need to sit there, go ahead. And we're, there's one person at a time. I don't understand why, why you need two chairs?
We'll do one chair.
Okay. Please state your name and address, please.
My name is Alex Bogarts. Uh, my address is two four four five Franklin Road, Bloomfield Township. I'm a registered architect, and we have been asked by the Tag Real Estate Group to take a look at their property. That is a, a commercial retail center and where they had one of their buildings planned previously, uh, or their pads, I should've said, planned previously for commercial, they've asked us to look at that for them as a residential application for apartments. There is no vehicle at this point in time that we're aware of in the community that allows that type of, uh, uh, you exist, that type of construction to exist. And, and in other words, you can't put multi-family in a commercial district. So we're before you to ask the simple question, would the community consider some way of, or what are the options opening to, open to us to bring a presentation before the community where we can suggest this reach, uh, this, uh, apartment building and retail space? I'm sure you all know that across the country, uh, retail has, is in, is in trouble, maybe not particularly, so much so here exactly in the community, but it is nationwide, and it is so actually in Michi- Michigan in many space, in many locations. We have, in my architectural practice, have converted retail in, for example, Canton, uh, that we had retail building that we did for a client, uh, eight years ago, and, and three spaces out in front stood vacant for all that time, and we finally went back to the community and asked them to convert it from retail to apartments. The great thing about having apartments near retail, it is, it is, that's how retail thrives, by having residential around it. And, uh, it's pretty much classic nationwide, too, which will do is they'll, they'll be residential development in an area, and then they'll take and they'll come in and provide commercial to that. What's happened with all the e-commerce of this, of the, currently is, is really changing that, that entire, um, format and that entire, uh, basis by which retail exists. So we're simply asking you, is there something, first of all, would the community consider bringing an apartment project into a retail or commercial location? And if so, how, how might we go, might we go about doing that? Now, Mark Abanath, who is also with me, he's an architect in my practice, he's one of our senior VPs, and he can, we, we can both talk to whatever extent you'd like to about the idea that we're trying to present to you. And I don't know if my four minutes is up yet or not, but I'll stop at that.
You're three minutes right now.
Three now.
You've got a minute to go.
Pardon?
You've got a minute to go.
Okay, good. All right, I'll take the minute.
Sure.
Um, well, as I said earlier, what happens is you're seeing, there's a, a mall in downtown Providence, Rhode Island, that it was, uh, the oldest mall in, in the country. Hundred and eighty-eight years ago, that mall was, was built for retail. They have now converted several of the upper floors into apartments to, with a roaring success, and it helps support the retail in there. So it's the kind of thing, it's a, I don't wanna say it's a, a freight train, but it's certainly something that's gonna be an emerging opportunity to every community. And it's something that, that is, really is what planning commissions are for, is to look ahead and see what's coming, how the landscape, how the retail and, and commercial and, and the, uh, business landscaping in your community is changing and will change over a long period of time, and what you might do as a commission to stabilize that, to, to bring strength, strength to those people that have made big investments. Okay, my time's up, I'll stop.
Time's up.
Yep.
All right. Thank you very much.
Before we go any further, the stuff we gave us today is for informational purposes only, correct?
Correct.
'Cause I just wanna make sure that everyone knew that.
Right.
Thank you.
Name and address, please, sir?
Sure. Mark Abanath, with Alexander Bogarts, two four four five Franklin Road, Bloomfield Hills. Uh, all I was gonna add to that was, uh, in speaking with the developers, there are malls like Lakeside Mall, which is in trouble and has been looked at by, purchased by the city to look at how they might reuse that, create some kind of adaptive reuse to it. So as Alex mentioned, this is going on all over the country. It's going on, obviously, in southeast Michigan, and we, we really look at it as a mixed-use development, which we do a lot of. So if you were to come in and you were to master plan this straight out from the beginning with just the dirt there, as Alex said, to have a thriving and vibrant community or overall development, having both residential to support the retail and retail to support the residential, it's a win-win situation. Uh, there's another site over in Commerce Township, same type of thing. It's been sitting there for a long time. It's primed for residential development. So there are a lot of areas in the community, southeast Michigan, all over the country where this is happening and where it becomes a perfect fit. So we had a meeting with Dave and with Jim, and we started to talk about the project. We're very excited about the project. We think it's a perfect fit. People can come into this project, walk to the restaurant, walk to some of the uses that are there. There are other uses, retail uses, restaurants across the street. This is what people are looking for, especially the younger millennials. They wanna have communities where they can walk to. And so it's a perfect fit for a piece of dirt that's been sitting there for a long time. Jobs will be created by it, um, tax base will be increased by it, and it'll create vibrancy to that entire corner. So we, we came in and we talked with them, and at that point in time, after they discussed it a little bit, as Alex mentioned, there isn't a specific vehicle, and I noticed you're starting to look at conditional rezoning. That's one thing. Um, but whatever we can do, we're just hoping that we can try and move the process forward. And if there's anything that we can do to submit or help the process move forward rather than wait for an overall study of a master plan, I don't know if it's possible to look at the master plan on this corner and more specific to this corner or this general area while you're evaluating the overall master plan or ordinance vehicles. But because we're excited about the project and we think it's a perfect fit, we just wanted to get in front of you and get some input and see if there isn't something that as a, a group, you know, we couldn't move the project forward. That's really all I have to say. I don't know...
Okay.
If you have anything else.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else? All right. We'll close the public portion then. I think they have something. Pardon me? Oh, something else. Is this about the same development?
No.
Okay, there's something different. Okay. And if you could put that right in front of the, the table there, I think that'd be great. Okay.
Name's Jeremy Stradley, owner of sixteen seven eighty...
Talk into the mic, please. Yeah, I know.
Good evening. My name's Jeremy Stradley.
Could you spell? Maybe move that over a little bit so we can see a little bit better.
There we go. Sorry.
Stradley?
S.T.R.A.D.L.E.Y.
Okay, thank you.
The owner of the, uh, Hub Sports Bistro, loaded, located at sixteen seven eighty twenty-one Mile Road in the, um, Common Metals Plaza, right there, twenty-one in Garfield. Um, what I brought today is, we're trying to get the, the city's temperature, if you will. Um, there's a proposed area, as you can see outlined in the black. Um, we'd like to expand and to allow our customers access to that area, if you will, in the summertime. Um, we have a lot of customers that have come to us asking for outdoor, outdoor activities during the summertime, obviously being sensitive to the neighborhood, understanding that something like this would have to be closed down at an early, earlier time. You know, noise ordinance is what, ten, ten-thirty, but we would probably consider something like nine, nine-thirty. Um, there's been a lot of acts of, uh, cornhole tournaments, things of that nature, uh, and activities, if you will. We don't know how to address something like this, whether it would be a special land use, zoning variance, or what may have you, or even furthermore, what the city's temperature is on this altogether period.
I'm just trying to figure out where, where they, is that a twenty-one in Garfield, you said?
That is. It's, it's right in the, the Common Metals Plaza. There's the Jets Pizza, as well as the, uh, the Echo or the Ace.
Okay.
We are located in the center. Um, the business was incorporated in two thousand and nine. I took it over in two thousand and twelve, I do believe.
And it's called?
I'm sorry?
It's called what?
The Hub Sports Bistro.
Yeah. Out sports bistro.
Sports bistro. The hub.
The hub's for young people.
I wouldn't say that, sir. Maybe, maybe till about eleven. But, um, but, you know, we, we have become a, a member of the community, we've, multiple fundraisers we've done there, and again, we've been expressed by many a people for things to do during the day. It's just another function that we can offer the community to do at our establishment. Obviously, there'd be no entrances or access to that area from the rear entrance of the building. You'd have to walk through the building to get to that area, 'cause it obviously would need to be fenced in and all those other things.
What corner is this identifying?
Uh, twenty-one in Garfield.
No, this corner where they proposed...
It's in the rear part, rear portion of the building.
What side?
The southeast corner.
Southeast corner, that's correct. Thank you.
So would this be behind the hub? Is that what you're saying?
It is behind the hub, that's correct. That white area that you see, um, that is the bar itself. That's the whole backside of the building, which obviously would require painting and cleaning up. That whole grassy knoll area is what we're, uh, proposing to fence in to allow our patrons to be able to go out, you know, have, hold these tournaments and whatnot.
Behind that is rut, is, there's homes?
There's condos. There is a condo complex behind that. There's probably about a fifteen-foot berm that sits behind there as well. The black area is the asphalt, which is the pass-through for the, uh, the plaza itself or service. And then there's another grass area, and then there's the berms, as you can see.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Thank you. We good on time? We are. Okay, anybody else? Would you like to share anything? All right, we'll close this portion, and we will move to commissioners' comments.
I just have one comment for Mr. Van Tiflin. Any word on the laptops?
Yes, I've had a couple of discussions, um, here at Town Hall with regard to that. We have gotten the prices, uh, estimates for the, the computer hardware. Um, the, it's with the supervisor's office right now. Uh, I believe it's gonna be put before the township board in an upcoming agenda. That's what I was told today, so...
Great. So we are moving forward?
Yes.
As said, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I did have a couple of questions and comments. Mr. Skirdle, Mr. Van Tiflin, obviously, we had a couple of presentations here tonight on two different subjects. The first individual was asking for a, um, reaction or a, uh, something from the planning commission, without going into what the planning commission thinks. What, what would you consider a, a proper, uh, timing? Is it, is it proper for us to say something about it tonight to potentially discuss in the future? What would you think would be the best way to handle this?
Typically, the best way for any place to handle this is, it's appropriate, you're ready to go through the master plan, rewrite, to get some ideas together. Another option that I have seen is planning commissions, um, retain somebody or direct staff to do a subarea plan. Um, one of the things, um, just to keep in mind, that although we're talking in this one corner, we gotta look at all similar corners throughout the township, 'cause once you do something in one spot, in terms of planning, you set precedent for what can happen in other areas. So my suggestion is just take this methodically and get through, uh, the ideas, the concept that I don't disagree with, um, that's happening around the, um, whole region. So, but you should still take this, rather than jumping into something and getting some ramifications that you aren't ready to, you know, deal with.
So if I can, if I can pull out of that what I heard, you would prefer to see this go with the master plan as opposed to looking at it earlier than that? Is that, generally speaking, what, what?
Generally speaking, uh, that's what I would suggest. I mean, this is the first time we've been presented with this. It only came in front of us a few weeks ago, which we were pleased to work with the, um, the folks that own the center. We gave them our thoughts and processes, but typically, I think I would, uh, stick with, sticking, going through your master plan.
Very good. Um, and then as regards the other petitioner, that looks like they're looking at some type of, uh, potentially special land use. Is that something that is, is administrative? Should we, should we be commenting on it at all? Does that have any flow right now?
Um, we just got a call last week on this, so we were just alerted to it last week, so we haven't had time to get into seeing what possibilities there are, whether it is a special use, is it something or some other type of mechanism.
So the petitioner would be, would be well advised to continue in the process with, uh, you and Mr. Van Tiflin until there was some further comment from the departments?
Yes.
Okay. Um, Mr. Chairman, um, with that, I would only have one brief comment on the first, um, the first, uh, presentation. That is, I agree that I think it should go more with the master plan. Um, there's some conversation, there is lots of conversation on the effects of e-commerce and millennials. Um, I have the either honor or, uh, less than honor of being both a millennial and working in the e-commerce sector, so I have some thoughts on, on that. Um, and I would say that, um, it's a very, uh, it's a very fluid environment, and I hesitate to say that there's any snap judgments that can be made with regards to what's appropriate considering, uh, where we are in that transition. As Jeff Bezos likes to say, we're on the first day of the internet, and who knows what's gonna happen at the end of the first week? So, actually, he says the first part, I'm adding the second part for clarification. Um, so with that, I, I think it's an interesting concept. I personally would really like to see it with the master plan, 'cause it has to be looked at...
Yes.
On a, on a much wider basis, I think, than, than one corner, so...
I agree. And for clarification, this is commercial, right? That land is...
Yes.
Commercial, okay. All right. Anybody else?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, ZBA liaison?
Mr. Chairman, we have not had a meeting yet this year.
Okay.
So I have no, no liaising to do yet.
All right. Fair enough. Planning department items.
No, we've been working on different, uh, zoning options. This is one we brought in twenty-eight tonight. We're also keeping a list on some of the conflicts we see in the zoning ordinance to see how we can fix those.
All right. Motion to adjourn.
I have a, do you? I have a question. Um, just as, as to, uh, status, um, uh, I know that you were interviewing or in the process of interviewing, um, for, uh, planning directors. Wondered if you could share, uh, any further status?
Uh, be happy to. Last Wednesday night, the township board voted to extend an offer to a candidate. Uh, we're now waiting for their paperwork to come in so we can proceed with all of the post-hire, um, requirements.
Okay.
Okay.
And, uh, two other questions. As you know, uh, oops, sorry.
I think that's me.
Could be you. Um, just a question regarding, um, uh, any word from the board regarding, um, an assigned, um, replacement, uh, for the vacancy that, uh, was left with, with Rogers passing, and then also for a liaison from the board.
I, I can address that. The agenda is not out yet, but I've seen an early draft of it, and that is on the next township board agenda, so they'll address that on the twenty-sixth next week. So if, if that's the case, then you'll have an, another member at that, at that time.